It's, uh, ten past ten. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting. County of Starr, Monday, December tenth. Let the record show we do have form, everyone being present. And thank y'all for being here and joining us this morning. Everyone, please stand for the collective allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
First item is, uh, minutes.
Two months.
Two months?
Yes.
I'm going to approve your...
Stand your motion.
Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next time is approval of claims, Mr. Carter.
The claims of all may be reviewed, they're all in order.
I do so, Morgan.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. If it's okay with the court, I see Mr. Gonzalez, our external auditor, is here. And he'd like to address the court in executive session. Uh, I believe that's item twenty-nine. If it's okay with the court, I'll ask that we move to item twenty-nine at this time. Uh, so we can... In case you need to leave, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, can I have a motion to that?
Motion, uh, Spat, Your Honor?
Question.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, we will now go into executive session to discuss the order of salaries, uh, an update on the audit from Mr. Gonzalez and his associates, and consulting with attorney on claim LE-two-zero-one-eight-five-three-seven-zero-dash-one. You know, we'll, we'll call the people that we need in, in executive session as we need it. Okay? Thank y'all very much. We'll be back shortly. It's, uh, ten forty-five, and we're back in, in open session. Uh, let's go to item twenty-nine. Uh, and this is, uh, the discussion, the status on the update of the Starr County audit by, uh, Gonzalez and Associates. Yeah, if you want to use the podium, identify yourself for the record.
Uh, yes. Is this on?
Yeah, it's, it's right just for the...
Okay, good. Yes, uh, my name is Melissa Gonzalez, and I am the, uh, engagement partner from Oscar Gonzalez and Associates. Uh, so would you like me to give you an update on the, for the audit?
Yeah, just where we're at, and how much longer do you anticipate stuff like that?
At this time, we're probably about seventy-five percent, uh, completed with the audit, but we are still lacking the main fund, which is the general fund. Uh, we have not received it yet to be able to continue with our audit.
Ma'am, I got a question because, uh, you know, I didn't read it about being asked around that, uh, apparently there was an article in the Monitor that stated that prior year, or last year, at least last year, that the previous auditor had done some shortcuts, uh, to finish the audit, to get, get it done on time. Uh, I'd like to know if it's true, or if it's, uh, what were the shortcuts that were being taken? Do we, did we actually have an actual correct audit or not last year?
Uh, to begin with, I'm not sure where that is coming from, because at this point in time, we did contact your previous auditor to ask for, because what we normally do, one of our procedures, is to ask for their work papers and to ask for their ending numbers. And what we do is we trace it to your beginning numbers to see that we're starting. But we haven't been able to do that, because we don't have the fund to be able to trace that the beginning numbers are beginning correctly. So I would not say that that is true at this point, because we...
But there were no shortcuts made.
At this point in time of the audit procedures that we have done, that hasn't been found, no.
But that was what came out of the paper, Your Honor, or not?
Something related, yeah.
Something similar to that, didn't it?
Yeah, that the, uh, past auditors had done some shortcuts.
So it's not the case then?
Not, not pertaining to what we have done so far.
Because if it was, if that was the case, I'm assuming that the prior auditor is incorrect, the prior audit is, is incorrect, in my opinion, if those shortcuts were made, which I don't know what they were.
Well, it's not, I, I would not be able to answer that question, because...
Have you contacted our, our, our auditor at this time to let him know that you need those papers and everything that we need?
We have had, yes, we have had various...
What is his response to it?
Uh, the last response that we received was on November thirtieth, and that they should have the books, uh, done and reconciled and ready by, uh, two weeks.
By two weeks? And did he provide any information within those two weeks?
We have not, uh, communicated since then.
And you haven't received anything as well?
No.
And, uh, how many times have you contacted him and let him know that we need those papers in order to finish the audit?
Uh, we've actually been in contact, we began your audit in April, and we were able to finish, uh, two of the, the component units. And we've been in contact since, uh, various times throughout the month. I think, uh, mainly it's been, because we have been able to come in and, like I said, work around and do testing on what was available to be able to get closer to when, once we have the numbers, we're able to complete our audit. So it's been various times throughout the month. We have been told that those funds, that there's adjustments that needed to be done, that they needed, and that they would be done in a couple of weeks. Uh, so it's been like that probably since, uh, July.
Since July?
Yes.
So, in other words, you've been playing a cat and mouse game since July till now with our audit, external audit? Because your, our auditor hasn't been able to provide your, the adequate information? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Wow. Three months, Your Honor.
Any other questions?
No.
I guess my, uh, my only question is, uh, assuming, and I don't know how long your contract is with the county, but assuming that, that you would be renewing the contract, how is this going to affect us for the audit next year?
Well, at this point in time, we're talking about if it's, if your September seventeenth is not completed yet, we're already sixteen months. So that means you're sixteen months behind. So, uh, I, I would not be able to, to tell you, it would depend on how much work is done to catch everything up, so that we would be able to begin, because really, your year end is September thirtieth. Uh, we should have already been beginning your twenty-eighteen audit. Usually you get about two, three months to close out, to be able to finish it of your deadline of June thirtieth. So you're, you're, you're sixteen months behind at this point in time.
So, so, ma'am, actually, if you continue to be the ex, well, I'm pretty sure, I think we got a two-year contract, don't you?
I think it is, yes.
You're on, on board for next year, so there's no way that the next audit will be done by June thirtieth, right?
At this point in time, it does not look like it, because it would not give us sufficient time to do everything if we do not have... The thing is, we need the numbers. We need your financial information to be able to tie everything.
What do you recommend that the court, or somebody does, to expedite this?
Uh, I'm not, uh, that, I would recommend that some, if the county auditor needs the help, or if they need somebody to come in and help them, uh, catch up everything, but obviously, there's, there's a, the problem, because your information is not up to date.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, anyone else from out of town that needs to come before the court? If not, we'll, we'll go back to, uh, I'm sorry?
Well, people who are...
Judge, judge.
Somebody was presenting...
Judge, the order salary, judge.
Gracias, Elena Cruz.
I see. Okay. Uh, oh, yes, I have a public audience, uh, on account number zero-zero-zero-eight-six-one-two.
(inaudible).
Yes. But, un momento, un momento.
Is the court going to be coming back to the report, or would you like to table it? You're taking this out of order? Because if the court didn't want to report, then just...
Okay, so we need to go through the reports?
You don't have to, just wanted to know.
Yeah, we, we, we want to do the reports. Yeah, normally, what we try and do, Mr. Gonzalez, is, is people that are not employees or whatever, in case they need to leave, you know, that they don't have to stay for two hours. Okay? Yeah. Okay. Pásale, Mr. Cruz.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Uh, usted, tenemos aquí porque tenemos un problema de la casa donde vivían, donde vivemos más bien. Este, de, del señor...
Valdemar Garza. Y es que nosotros, nosotros fuimos a la corte para, porque mi mamá tiene cinco, casi seis años ahí viviendo. Entonces queremos, nos dijeron que por medio de la corte, el señor no había pagado las taxas. Entonces nos dijeron que nosotros podíamos pagarlas. Mi mamá las pagó, pero no eran, no traba el nombre de mi mamá, la pagamos al nombre de Don Valdemar Garza. Dimos mil quinientos dólares. Entonces ahora fue él nos dice que no se va a poder hacer nada, y no nos van a poder regresar el reembolso de los mil quinientos dólares. Nosotros queremos saber dónde está ese dinero. Si mi mamá, sí es cierto que vivió ahí y está viviendo ahí, cómo le va a hacer para allá? Nosotros nos estamos esperando, eh, sacar a mi mamá de ahí, pero si no le dan el dinero, ¿a dónde se va a ir mi mamá? O sea, queremos ese dinero, y fuimos a hablar con John Ben, y yo tengo solar ahí, pero por medio de mi situación, yo la perdí, mi, el solar, entonces yo le di mil dólares a John Ben, y me faltan otros mil dólares para agarrar otra vez el terreno para atrás, y yo metimos una trailita para que mi mamá se vaya ahí. Entonces queremos, por favor, que nos ayuden a agarrar ese dinero para que mi mamá se pueda salir de ahí, porque nosotros estábamos esperando, nomás, eh, ese dinero se dio en junio veintisiete, y ya tenemos varios tiempo que mañana, y que pasado, y que vamos a hablar con los comisionados. Entonces nosotros queremos que ellos nos ayuden, o qué podemos hacer?
Pagaron, entonces, pagaron en la escuela?
Sí.
En donde quiera pagar?
Sí, aquí traemos, este...
Y, y la escuela, él les devolvió el dinero?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Canales.
(inaudible). I don't think so, yeah.
(inaudible). Si ustedes me dicen la oficina mía, que es la tarde ahora, una dos de tarde, van a interesar piso, en la oficina del fiscal de Victor Canales.
Ya.
Este, le puedo preguntar con usted, pero en el momento, la corte de esta no puede hacer nada con, con el caso de ustedes en este momento, pero yo me presento con usted a discutir su caso, y explicarle que es un problema de su...
Sí, el señor Canales es el fiscal del Condado.
Ya.
So, esta es una, es algo...
Es que nosotros no sabemos.
Más legal que...
Podrían ir al tercer piso ahora, a la dos de tarde.
A la dos de la tarde?
Sí.
Sí.
Vuelvo y me presento con ustedes a discutir su caso, pero...
Pero tardaría mucho, es que mira, disculpe, pero nosotros ya no queremos, a tardarnos mucho, nos estábamos esperando ahí, entonces, ah, van a decir, pues, es que ya se tardaron mucho, o...
Le puedo explicar, no, 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 no.
Sí, porque, eh, mi hermana me había dicho que este caso, como el Telemundo, te ayudan, las, que podían, no, no, le dije, yo no, yo no, mi mamá no, no quiere hacer ese... No pueden...
No, 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 no.
Sí, porque si te le, ay, no, el Telemundo llama a Telemundo, y te pueden, como, orientar, que se puede hacer en estos casos, verdad? O sea, nosotros no sabemos, pero queremos saber...
Entonces, ¿le puedo preguntar con usted, a la dos de tarde, con el tercer piso?
Okay. Con Victor Canales?
Sí.
Okay.
Dispense, ¿él rentaba ahí, o...?
Sí, le renta, le rentaban a mi mamá, un señor, pero ese señor no era el dueño, no era el dueño.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, I think best if they just go to Victor.
Está bien, está bien.
Okay.
Gracias, que tenga un buen día.
That's all right.
Gracias.
Okay. We'll go back to, uh, our regular agenda, under reports, Gas Department, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, I really don't have much to add on, on my report, it's on your, on your package, in your package. The only thing, uh, that I'd like to, to say is that I'm meeting with a contractor that you all awarded the bid for steel replacement pipe last week. I'm meeting with him at one-thirty today. He doesn't see, like, he's got a problem starting sometime this week, so we should be able to meet our deadline of, uh, December thirty-first. We should be on time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transfer station, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Uh, got to update you on the purchase of the tire cutter. Uh, we, we did get approved by TCQ and the COG, but they will not, uh, give us the okay until all the grants are approved. I think they still have one or two pending that they haven't finished from the other entities. As soon as that is approved, then they'll let us know and release those funds for us to purchase.
Wait, is this tire cutter going to be for truck tires, or for regular...
Truck tires.
So, from now on, we just bring them?
We can, we can get semi-trucks.
Semi-trucks, oh, okay.
And, uh, and we're probably going to have to update our tipping fee for, if we're going to advertise on that.
Yeah.
But we'll get together with Ms. Garrett and come up with a number on that. I want to take the opportunity and thank Commissioner Garza, because, uh, we've been having trouble with our, uh, big loader, the nine-twenty-eight, and we needed to transfer it, and he was, I mean, real helpful. He thinks he's a low boy and loaded up and took it to another mechanic, because we couldn't get any mechanic locally to look at it. The problem is more internal and bigger than what we...
He said he was going to look at it today, he was going to try to, uh, to see what was the problem, like I told you.
Yes.
It's going to be something big, because...
We talked about...
But I know it's a lot expensive than what they can do, be the halt out there. They can, they'll, they'll, you know, a job on this one. And this guy's a professional, too, you know?
You know, and I'm very grateful, and we're going to follow the guidance that you're giving us on, on maintaining and keeping working on that.
Yeah, because you need to have somebody, but he was not well-maintained, you know?
I talk to him about the issue, and it had been a while since they had changed all of the... Yeah, the maintenance of, uh, we, the contract we hold has run out, and once again, locally, it's kind of hard to get someone that really knows about those. But, uh, hopefully by next meeting, we'll be able to report that we already have that tire cutter, like I said, so we can come up with, with suggestions.
It's not going to be a car, a tire cutter, or just to pull all the steel from the sidewall.
The tire cutter is going to be, will be taking off the sidewalls of it.
That's all.
That's all.
And then you're going to cut it with the other one?
Mm-hmm. That will make it so much easier.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot easier. I'd like, I'd like to go look at it, because I, I can be one, not me, but my work.
Yeah. We're, we've been in touch with the, the vendors, so hopefully, as soon as they give us the okay, once again, uh, they have to be approved. All the entity have to be approved in order for us to get that money. We're just hoping, I think, it's one that is not being approved, but there was little paperwork here and there that they need to...
Because we've got an epidemic with the tires here, Your Honor, like I told you last time.
Yeah.
We have that, one particular person out there that stores these, these tires at his mom's house, and we have taken pictures of it, and we'll go pick them up, we'll pick up the tires. Fifteen days later, he's got another bunch in there.
How many?
What? Forty, fifty tires? And then he, and then we went, we, we went back into, in the backyard, and he had some more, more tires up there. And the, the poor lady there, listening, what can you tell the old lady? You want to pick them up?
Has, has TCQ been notified of those tires?
Well, they just, they don't pay anything, they're not going to count for that kind of...
Yeah, but we...
I, I, we, two people filed complaints up there, illegal dumping. We got another place up there, they didn't even show up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not even waste of the time to call them up, you know? They don't enforce it. Even persons up there, if they were the county, I guarantee they'd be on here immediately.
Yeah, I've, I've had that experience.
Yeah, I mean, you can call them that there's an illegal dump, and I'm told, bro, I told you, I went in there...
But there's other sources under TCQ, just, we got constables, sheriff department, the court enforcement...
Give me a break.
But, I mean, but we, there's a health code, there's a, whatever code, they, they can enforce it.
My suggestion on that, and I...
Turn on what thing?
Is, uh, illegal dumping, if we get, like us over here, we've been getting, uh, illegal trash, and they have received, like, water bills, cable bills, or even medication bottles, and we get the address. If those people would get fined, and you put it on a tejano, or enlace, or whatever that they did get fined, hopefully people will be afraid of, oh, they got hit with a hundred-dollar fine, or, I mean, I don't know the, the fine...
It has to be a hefty fine.
I meant my constable, they were doing that, unfortunately, we did a lot of those, and, uh, he was the only one, but now he's ill, and, and...
That don't work, Ms. Gonzalez, that, what you're talking about, it don't work, no.
I think if we get, we'll get together, and you'll be constable, and the JP's to help us out.
In this area, they, they, they don't want to do it, because they put it in the market.
Yeah, but if we get all that working together, we, we should alleviate that problem, albeit, I would think...
We got an epidemic on those big tires, like, and like, we, I'm, I'm thinking of them, but man, it's...
You know, at the, at the turn of the year, when the new JP's come in, I'd like to have a, a little pow-wow with all of them, on other things that we need. Uh, I'll, I'll bring that up, you know, that, uh...
To enforce it more.
To enforce it, yes, to help us out.
To enforce it more.
Yeah.
Because, uh, the, the Tenero Grande is trying to enforce it a bit, but they haven't been able either. They purchased some, through the COG, they purchased some cameras to put in the illegal...
Is that one of them? I don't know. Is it an opposer or what?
Yeah.
You know, what, what were you doing?
I wonder, I wonder if we could pass policy, and the attorneys are gone, but if we could pass a policy, or, that minimum would be two hundred dollars, maximum a thousand, whatever, and that the, that way the JP's have to charge at least a two-hundred dollar.
Yeah, and we can start posting it on, on social media and stuff, and, and...
What we were doing, we had somebody throwing trash or tires, or we found a receipt, we made him either pay five-hundred-dollar fine, or go pick up all that trash and all the spots along that road, and take it to a landfill and show the receipt that you paid for. That's what the constable was doing. We give you an option, you pay five-hundred dollars, or you go pick up all that trash and throw it all the way to that road, clean it up.
Yeah.
I do remember one, one instance on, on your area where, I think it was like five years ago, a lady that used to sell Mary Kay or something, she threw the buckets behind where the buckets are in Rio, ISB, buckets are, behind Co-op, and they, they got her, and she had to come and dump and pay, and...
We, we got somewhere there, and we...
I remember that one.
So I think, once we start doing that, I think it will alleviate a problem a bit, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but it will help the county and the, the entities of...
As soon as that tire cutter comes in, I'd like to go see, and I want to take that guy that built the one for me, and for Mr. Sain.
No, well...
And I think we can attach it to the old, the same, the one we got, attach the thing, but we need to know what kind of material, because we tried it once, and it bent it up, uh, one-inch thick, to pull it out.
Yeah.
And, and those, you can adapt it to it, but we need to know...
I'll let you know as soon as we get it, that list out as a night.
Yeah, I was trying to build one, but like, like a chop saw, but I haven't been able to find that big blade that they use to cut steel. I need about a forty-inch blade, forty-eight-inch blade, and just cut it down in four pieces.
Well, think that, uh, concrete, uh, blade cutter, they, they cut it to concrete and...
Yeah, see, but I want to make it a big round, so you can, this is like, like a, like a chop saw, you know, or one that you can butcher back and forth, and just cut it like cutting lumber.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Tax Assessor, Ms. Elias.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
This is my report for November twenty-eighteen. You have it in front of you? The total county worth collections for November twenty-eighteen were seven million, five-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen, and fifty-one cents. In November twenty-seventeen, there were six million, twenty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty, twenty-six, and fifty-five cents. There was a total of one million, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight, eighty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-one, net with ninety-five cents, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-two, with ninety-three cents, less than last year. Our total collections, current, for Starr County entities, were four million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five, and eighty-four cents. Current collections in November of twenty-seventeen were three million, five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-six, with sixty-two cents. There was a total collections of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine, and twenty, twenty-two cents, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected eighty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four, and forty-one cents, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections in November twenty-eighteen, just for Starr County, were two-hundred, two, two-hundred-and-eight-thousand, fifty, fifteen dollars, and twenty-nine cents. Total delinquent collections in November twenty-seventeen were two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one, and forty, forty cents. There was a total delinquent collections of ten thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six, and eleven cents, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected thirty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, nine cents, more than last year. As of November the thirtieth, the tax office has collected fifty-one percent of the projected collections. The projected collections remaining are six million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-one, and forty-two cents. There you have my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
County clerk, Ms. Gonzalez.
Judge, that's my report before you. And I...
We do have the report before us. Any questions or comments on that? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Sheriff's Department? Chief?
Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
The total revenues for the month of November is two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, with one-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
The numbers remain pretty steady, don't they?
We've had, uh...
For the last few months?
We've had the, with the federal inmates, an average of one-hundred-and-twenty-one a month. For today's count, it was at a hundred-and-thirty-seven, with, with thirty from Idago County.
That, the hundred and thirty, that's combined?
That's federal. That's federal itself.
And then the, the additional thirty-nine, oh, one was pretty good.
Yes, sir.
So you have collected for the two-thousand-and-seventeen, eighteen, two-million, eight-hundred-and... eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, and eighteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, right?
I believe that was for the fiscal year of twenty, twenty-seventeen.
That's for la, last year.
Last year, last year. Today, for, for this fiscal year, we're at four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-four, which is, uh, an increase of almost thirty thousand from, from last year.
Okay. And what were they budgeted on, on for last year? We, you went over it?
Yes, sir, we, we, we did go over that budget. I believe, uh, I don't know the numbers, but we were set at, at a hundred for, for
We've two people filed complaints up there of illegal dumping. We got another place out there, they didn't show up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not even waste of the time to call them up. They don't enforce it. You know, persons out there, if they were the county, I guarantee that they'd be on here immediately.
Yeah, I've had that experience.
Yeah, I mean, you can call them that there's an illegal dump and I'm told, Rowan told you that I went in there.
But there's other sources under the DC, you just, we got constables, sheriff department, the court enforcement.
Give me a break.
But I mean, but we, there's a health code, there's a whatever code, they can enforce it.
My suggestion on that, and we.
Turn on what thing?
Is, uh, illegal dumping, we get, like us over here, we've been getting, uh, illegal trash, and they have received like water bills, cable bills, or even medication bottles, and we get the address. If those people would get fined and you put it on a tejano or enlaza or whatever that they did get fined, hopefully people will be afraid of, oh, they got hit with a hundred dollar fine, or, I mean, I don't know the, the.
It has to be a hefty fine.
I met my constable, he was doing that enforcement, we did a lot of those, and he was the only one, but now he's ill and, and.
That don't work, Mr. Gonzalez, that, what you're talking about, it don't work.
We all get together and you're the constable, then the JP's to help us out.
In this area, they, they, they don't want to do it because they put it in the mouth.
Yeah, but if we get all that working together, we should alleviate that problem a bit, I would think.
We got an epidemic on those big tires, like, and like, we, I'm, I'm thinking of them, but man, it's.
You know, at the, at the turn of the year, when the new JP's come in, I'd like to have a, a little powwow with all of them, on other things that we need. Uh, I'll, I'll bring that up, you know, that, that, uh. To enforce it, yes, to help us out, yeah.
Because, uh, the, the Tira Rio Grande is trying to enforce it a bit, but they haven't been able either. They purchased some, through the cog, they purchased some cameras to put in the illegal.
Is that a camera? I don't know. Put it in the poser or what?
Yeah.
I wonder, I wonder if we could pass policy and the attorneys are gone, but if we could pass a policy or that minimum would be two hundred dollars, maximum a thousand, whatever, and let the, that way the JP's have to charge at least a two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and we can start posting it on, on social media and stuff and, and.
What, what we were doing, if we had somebody throwing trash or tires, or we found a receipt, we're, we're making either pay five hundred dollar fine, or go pick up all that trash and all the spots along that road, and take it to the landfill and show the receipt that you paid for. That's what the constable was doing. We give you an option. You pay five hundred dollars, or you go pick up all that trash and throw it all the way to that road, clean it up.
Yeah.
I do remember one, one instance on, on your area where, I think it was like five years ago, a lady that used to sell Mary Kay or something, she threw the buckets behind where the buckets are in Rio, ISB, buckets are, behind Coop, and they, they got her and she had to come and dump and pay and.
We, we got somewhere there, and we.
I remember that one.
So I think once we start doing that, I think it will alleviate a problem a bit, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but it will help the county and the, the entities of.
As soon as that, Carter comes in, I'd like to go see him, I want to take that guy that built the one for me, for, for sign. And I think we can attach it to the old, the same, the one we got, attach the thing, but we need to know what kind of material, because we tried it once and it bent it up, uh, one inch thick, to pull it out.
Yeah.
And having those, you can adapt it to it, but we need to know.
I'll let you know as soon as we get it, that list out as soon as.
Yeah, I was trying to build one, but like, like a chop saw, but I haven't been able to find that big blade that they use to cut steel. I need about a forty inch blade, forty eight inch blade, and just cut it down in four pieces.
Well, think that, uh, concrete, uh, blade cutter, that, they, they cut it to con- concrete and.
Yeah, see, but I want to make it a big round so you can, this is like, like a, uh, like a chop saw, you know, or one that you can butcher back and forth, you just cut it like cotton lumber.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Uh, tax assessor, Ms. Elias.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
This is my report for November twenty eighteen. You have it in front of you? The total county worth collections for November twenty eighteen were seven million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen and fifty-one cents. In November twenty seventeen, there were six million, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty, twenty-six and fifty-five cents. There was a total of one million, five hundred and eighty-eight, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-one, net with ninety-five cents, more than last year. Year to date, we have collected one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and two, with ninety-three cents, less than last year. Our total collections, current, for Star County entities were four million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five and eighty-four cents. Current collections in November of twenty seventeen were three million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six, with sixty-two cents. There was a total collections of one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine and twenty, twenty-two cents, more than last year. Year to date, we have collected eighty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four and forty-one cents, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections in November twenty eighteen, just for Star County, were two hun- two, two hundred and eight thousand, fifty, fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Total delinquent collections in November twenty seventeen were two hundred and eighty, eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one and forty, forty cents. There was a total delinquent collections of ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-six and eleven cents, less than last year. Year to date, we have collected thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine and twenty-nine, nine cents, more than last year. As of November the thirtieth, the tax office has collected fifty-one percent of the projected collections. The projected collections remaining are six million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and twenty-one and forty-two cents. There you have my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Elias. County clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, Judge, that's my report before you.
We do have the report before us. Any questions or comments on that? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, sheriff's department? Chief.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
The total revenues for the month of November is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty-six thousand with a hundred and fifty dollars.
The numbers remain pretty steady, don't they?
We've had, uh.
For the last few months?
We've had the, with the federal inmates, an average of a hundred and twenty-one a month. For today's count, it was at a hundred and thirty-seven with, with thirty from Idago County.
That, the hundred and thirty, that's combined?
That's federal, that's federal itself.
And then the, the additional thirty-nine, oh, well, that's pretty good.
So you have collected for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two million, eight hundred and eight hundred and nineteen dollars, and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, right?
I believe that was for the fiscal year of twenty, twenty seventeen.
That's for la- last year.
Last year, last year. Today, for, for this fiscal year, we're at four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-four, which is a, an increase of almost thirty thousand from, from last year.
Okay. And what were they budgeted on, on for last year? We, you went over it.
Yes, sir, we, we, we did go over that budget. I believe, uh, I don't know the numbers, but we were set at, at a hundred for, for federal, if I'm correct, Judge? And I believe we're at one ten.
How much was budgeted for last year?
Forty.
Yeah, I don't recall.
The number was close to, about, maybe three million, right? But the budget was at one point something.
We didn't, we didn't come under.
No.
I, I don't recall, but, but, uh, that particular year, the federal money started coming in towards the end.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't the whole year.
No, it wasn't the whole year.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you, chief. International bridge.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the revenue for November two thousand and eighteen. It's, uh, two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And we show a decrease of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine with fifty cents for the month of November two thousand and eighteen, compared to the month of November two thousand and seventeen. And we also show a decrease of three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars with fifty cents. That's on collections for the month of November two thousand and eighteen, compared to the month of October two thousand and eighteen. We have other collections of six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ten cents, and the grand total collections for November two thousand and eighteen, it's two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Let me ask you something, well, it's surely to, to know how is it going to increase, based on the, on the budget that we have budgeted, is it going pretty?
Yeah, we're making, um, a little bit over two hundred thousand, which is what we expect every month.
Yeah, we're, we're making, we're making a little less than we were last year, and, but like you say, it's too early, you know, it could pick up in the summer.
And this month, we had the problem, because, uh, they, they were saying they were going to shut down the bridge here, so, so many people were skeptical about going into Mexico, but I don't think we're going to have a problem this month.
Yeah. So. Yeah, the, the, you know, on, on, on the bright side, you know, I always try to look for the positive side. If we do make less than we did last year, or we don't meet the, the budget, that means that's much, that much more money that we're going to be paying the city of Roma, uh, and what we owe, because currently, even though Roma has a thirty-five percent interest in, in the bridge, I believe on the budget, I had them at, at a forty-five percent, uh, profits, is what we're going to pay them, to start paying down on, on that debt. So, we could end up paying more than, than that, which is good.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Uh, treasurer?
Ramiro Green. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, this report is for the month ending October twenty eighteen. The general fund had four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, being three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars more than the same time last year. The road and bridge fund had three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, being two, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. The total cash amount in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer, as of the end of this period covered by this report, is ten point seven million dollars. This is overall, this amount is one point four million dollars more than the same time last year, and the schedules are attached. We continue to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety. And the county's city of Roma account is currently past due by over one point three million dollars. Uh, the combined debt for Star County was three point one million, being one point two million dollars less than the same time last year. The county's amounts in deposits were well collateralized at a hundred and twenty-three percent. This pledge level is twenty-three percent above the LCG, LGC chapter twenty-two fifty-seven point zero twenty-two requirements, and eighteen percent above our contract terms with Lone Star National Bank. The twenty eighteen budget included the borrowing of a one million tax anticipation note, but did not go through. Cash is very low, and most vendors were on payment hold as of October thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
But let me add that all of them got paid. All the vendors got paid.
Yes. This report is as per Mr. Pena. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Both of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, auditor, Mr. Carter.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
You have my report before you. The report show, the report contains the cash reconciliation report for the general fund. Cash available at November the thirtieth was three million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. The road and bridge had cash available of one million, ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars and thirty-one cents. And the payroll clearing fund contained cash available of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. The expenditure report for the month of November third, ending November thirtieth, is shown compared to the percent of the year elapsed of sixteen point seven percent. The general fund as a whole has expended fifteen point six percent of the projected budget. Then within the general fund are the following departments. The county judge has expended thirteen point six one percent. The county clerk has, office has expended fifteen point six five percent. The human resources department has expended fourteen point nine eight percent. The planning department expended fourteen point eighty-four percent. The federal and state program expended fifteen point thirty-seven percent. The countywide general fund expended fourteen point three six percent. The county court at law expended fourteen point seven five percent. The two hundred and twenty-ninth district court expended thirteen point ninety-seven percent. The three hundred and eighty-first district court expended thirteen point one percent. The district clerk expended fourteen point three, thirteen, fourteen point thirty percent. The county attorney expended seventeen point four five percent. The district attorney has expended thirteen point thirty percent. The county auditor's office has expended fourteen point eighty-seven percent. The county treasurer's office has expended fifteen point oh one percent. The tax assessors, uh, tax assessor collector's office has expended fourteen point three three percent. The building maintenance department has expended thirteen point six four percent. The detention center has expended seventeen point seven one percent. The juvenile detention center has expended thirteen point seven four percent. The sheriff's department has expended fifteen point thirty-four percent. The agricultural extension service has expended thirteen point twenty-eight percent. The four precincts of the nutrition program combined have expen- has expended sixteen point nine percent. The elections administrator has expended thirty-nine point twenty-three percent of that budget year to date. The expenditure report for the road and bridge fund, um, combined, the, the, the road and bridge fund total has expended seventeen point one seven percent of its budget year to date, and within that total are the four precincts. Precinct number one has expended twenty-two point four nine percent. Precinct number two has expended twenty-one point forty percent. Precinct number three has expended twenty point forty-nine percent. Precinct number four has expended sixteen point oh nine percent. And the countywide road and bridge fund has expended seven point ninety-seven percent. In the revenue reports, the general fund, uh, current taxes has received twenty-five point nineteen percent of the projected budget. Nine point three zero percent of the fees of office. State salary supplements have received, has received twenty-three point seventy-eight percent of that projected budget. The Department of Family Services grant has, has received forty-two point two six percent. International bridge, uh, transfers have been eleven point seventy-seven percent. And the, uh, building permits have collected nineteen point nineteen percent of its projected budget. So the general fund in total has collected eighteen point eighty-one percent of its projected budget. In the road and bridge fund, the current taxes, uh, have collected, have been, have received forty point thirty-five percent of its projected budget. Fines and forfeitures have been collected in the amount of six point forty-nine percent. Vehicle weight fees have already, has already collected sixty-six point thirty-six percent of its projected budget. The real Bravo, uh, payment in lieu of taxes has already received a hundred percent of that budget. And the road and bridge fund in total has collected five point thirty-two percent of its projected budget. The international bridge has already received eight point nineteen percent of its projected revenue for the year, in the, in the bridge tolls, and eight point oh four percent in total. And the expenditures have been eighteen point nineteen percent of the expected, excuse me, of the projected budget. In the gas operating system, the, uh, revenue received is eight point five eight percent of the projected budget, and the expenditures are twelve point two four percent. In the solid waste transfer station, the revenue is fourteen point thirteen percent received, and the expenditures are twenty point six two percent of the projected budget. At the top of page eight is a summary of the debt owed by Star County. The tax note series twenty fourteen A has a balance of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, that's payable from the general fund. The certificate of obligation two thousand and four has a balance of five hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Uh, that's paid from the interest and sinking fund, and that debt is in the process of being paid off. There is a, there's an agenda item, uh, later on this agenda to, to facilitate that. There is an equipment loan for precinct number three, road and bridge fund, that has a balance of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Uh, there's an equipment loan for the road and bridge fund that has a balance of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And I think the final payment is being made this month on that. Uh, the equipment loan, there's also an equipment loan for precinct four. It has a balance of forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And another, uh, equipment loan for precinct four that has a balance of four hundred, forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Another equipment loan for precinct two that has a balance of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars. And, uh, an equipment loan for precinct one that has a balance of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and six dollars. The participation owed to the city of Roma is one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six eighty, making, uh, the total debt owed by Star County as of November thirtieth, two million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. In the, in the debt service funds, we have the general obligation interest and sinking fund that has a current balance of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. The construction interest and sinking fund two thousand and four has a balance of three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And making a total amount of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, compared to the total debt, uh, total indebtedness, uh, dedicated to that, for those funds, that those funds are dedicated for, is seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eighty-three dollars, giving us a surplus of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. There are no unpaid invoices being held by the auditor's office at this time. And the additional revenue certified by the county auditor year to date is eighteen thousand, eight hundred for the district clerk, and twenty-five thousand for the district attorney's office. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Judge, it's not on the agenda, but could I address some of the previous comments made by the, uh, by the CPA firm?
Can, yeah, go ahead.
Just, uh, is that, I? Here with four. Yeah, uh, Judge, you can recall the, the jet item, if people, there was no item, uh, no action on it, but, uh, just recall that as ten to nine.
Okay, let's go back to, uh, well, that, that's the end of our report, so let's go back to item twenty-nine, and this is, uh, on the, uh, report on, on the audit given by Gonzalez' firm, Mr. Carter.
Okay. Judge and Commissioners, please recall that I've joined Star County staff as the auditor in May of last year. And in fact, at that point, the audit had not even been started. So, my staff and I worked as hard as we could to prepare the books to be audited. And perhaps the choice of words of shortcut is not an accurate description, but, you know, we worked nights and weekends, and I, I'd like to, I'd like to also add that the CPA firm that we were working with at that time had been with the county for many years. So they were already familiar with our books, they were already familiar with our computer system, they were already familiar with our accounting system, they're already familiar with our staff. And so, working with them very closely, we were able to expedite preparing the books to be audited. Now then, what I meant by the term of shortcut, when I described that process, was that, in effect, we asked that, we asked Patillo Brown and Hill, the audit firm at that point, for their assistance in preparing those books to be audited. They provided that assistance, which is not part of their engagement, but they, they voluntarily did it for us. So, that's the shortcut that I, that was referred to previously, okay? They didn't, Patillo Brown and Hill was not, was not obligated to do that for us, but they understood the gravity of the situation, and being the true professionals that they are, they pitched in, it helped, and we got the job done expeditiously. This year is an entirely different situation. We have a new accounting firm who's never seen us before, doesn't know our books, doesn't know our system, doesn't know the staff, and we've had to start from scratch, all over again. So, you know, I, I'll be the first to tell you that my management of the whole situation has not been perfect. There's a lot about being a county auditor that I don't know yet. You know, I've been in the job eighteen months, and there's, the, the auditor, usually the auditor's responsibility is deep and complicated. So, Noah, if you're looking for something to criticize me, I'll raise my hand and say yes. All right, I, I, I know full well the shortcomings that have, that have happened, and things I could have done better. And in hindsight, it's easy, they're easy to see, but when you're, when you're fighting the fire, you know, when the blaze is in your face, that's all you can see at that point in time. So, uh, you know, I sincerely regret the delay that we're having. And, and believe me, I am painfully aware of the, of the, uh, severe consequences that the county faces because of that. My, I, I feel my staff and I have done a, a professional job. I do give compliments to, uh, the, uh, the accounting firm of Oscar Gonzalez and Associates. They don't have anybody on their staff that is familiar with, uh, our computer accounting system. I had asked them for help, but they don't. I had asked them for help, but they don't have anybody capable or knowledgeable of our particular accounting system that can, that could, that could come in and help. So, it's been up to my staff and I to do it by ourselves. We worked nights, weekends, holidays, every, every minute possible to address the situation. And in fact, we do expect to deliver the reconciled general fund to the CPA firm this week. By Friday, we expect them to have it. So, yeah, perhaps my choice of words for the, for the newspaper review was unfortunate.
Based on what they told, and I'm told, that they had offered help from their office to your office to complete, to expedite this matter faster, and apparently you had declined to the help that they were willing to bring.
No, I didn't, I didn't decline. I just simply pointed out the fact that this computerized accounting system that we have is a whole, is leftover from the nineteen nineties. It's old, it's out of date, it's clunky, it's labor-intensive and paper-intensive. And there's only two counties in the state of Texas that I've found that use it. And they don't have anybody on staff that's familiar with the inner workings of that computer system to be able to, to, to audit, to, to create, to build the financial statements in order for them to audit it. So, not that I declined it, they, they did offer and we discussed it, but the bottom line was they don't have anybody knowledgeable of our old accounting system to be able to help. So, and we're, we're, we're stuck with that accounting system, so it's, now, believe me, my staff and I talk about this every day. And we do talk with Oscar Gonzalez and Associates almost every day. And there is good communication between us and, and Oscar Gonzalez and Associates.
And based on, on, on your experience and what we've gone through, Mr. Carter, for the following year, it'll be, we'll be in the same boat like we are this year, yeah.
Well, I've learned a lot, Commissioner, in the last, in the last nine months studying and observing how this situation has evolved. No, my staff and I have a plan to do much better. We really do. I can't, you know, don't have a crystal ball, I can't predict the future. I would assure you that my staff and I are totally dedicated to getting the job done in a, in a professional manner as fast as possible. So, we have a plan to get the audit done on time this coming year. So, right after Christmas, we're going to start preparing for it.
We're only six months away from, from the next due audit.
I understand that, absolutely.
Yeah, Mr. Carter.
We've got a big job ahead of us.
Certainly, certainly, you know, this was not to point fingers at who, who dropped the ball or why or anything like that, you know, it's just that, as, as a court, it's a commissioner's court, we have the fiduciary duty to keep our constituents up to date and, and our employees up to date as to what's happening, what are we doing, and that sort of thing. And as, as you know, and I know, and the commissioners know, we're, we're getting right there to the point that we're going to start losing money if we don't get this thing done. And, and when it comes to that, then, of course, our taxpayers need to know. One, one thing that I guess was bothersome was the shortcuts, because it makes it seem to a layperson like myself, when you hear the word shortcuts, is that someone was not doing the job the way they should have been doing it. And that therefore, as the commissioner, as Commissioner Gotta said, maybe some of the things that we did were not correct or, God forbid, not legal. And that's the first thing that this has ever come.
Well, unfortunate choice of words, but Patillo Brown and Hill did help us.
Okay.
And they completed the audit, they gave us their audit report. If they'd had any serious concerns, they would have, they would have put that concern, stated that concern in the report or to us, or to us in the management letter or their other, other standard communications that, that happened between a CPA firm and a client.
And, and then the other thing is, even, even though Commissioner's Court does not have much say-so, really any say-so in, in the audit or in the auditor's office, you know, we, we still want to, to help in any way we can. If there's something that, that we can help, more personnel, whatever, you know, we, we need to know so that, because we...
I've reached out to other people, other, other people I know here in Rio Grande that, that have some knowledge about this old accounting system that we use. I offered them a part-time job, a temporary job to come in and help us, you know, on an hourly basis. And in fact, I even provided for that in the budget. The two people that I reached out to both declined.
And to the state, not the record, you know, to me, the way it, it, it sounded on, on the comments, on the, on the monitor, that we, we accepted and not an actual correct audit based on the shortcuts that we took, I said, well, then we got a problem. We're not seeing the true figures of the, of the financials of the county. That's the way I saw it. Well, that's just my opinion, you know.
And again, this, this...
That's not the perception, that's not the perception that was intended and it's not...
And I understand, but you know, that's the way I see it.
And, and again, you know, we're, we're in this ship, all of us are in this ship together. So, we, we, we want to keep our course and get to where we want to be. So, again, this was not to point fingers or, or accuse anyone of not doing their job, it's just where are we and what can we do to, to improve it? That was really the, the main thing that we wanted to, to find out.
Okay.
But, but we, we do appreciate the work that you all are doing, Mr. Carter.
Like in every issue, Mr. Carter, all five of us can read the same thing and all five of us can interpret different things. So, depends on what, how you read it. It doesn't work on it.
Okay, item six is a vendor's list.
The vendor's list has been reviewed and the new vendor's documentation is all in order.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is to accept the resignation of Mr. Ramon Gonzales to the housing authority board and...
I move that we approve the resignation.
Moved and second, this is being that he will be an elected official next month, he cannot serve. Can I have a motion and second to approve discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item nine is to appoint Monsieur Roy Gonzales to the housing authority board. He had asked that he wanted to help any week.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item ten is an action item, and this is to approve a purchase of Canon Advance IRC fifty-five thirty-five I multifunction copier for the district attorney's office.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Along the same lines, eleven is to approve, well, no, this is to approve a monthly service plan, I guess, for the, for the speeds of equipment.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item twelve is an action item, and this is to approve the two twenty-nine DA Tri-County Chapter Fifty-Nine report that Mr. Scolari reported.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item thirteen is to approve a donation of ten thousand. This is what we always give to the soil and water conservation district.
Approve a donation or gift?
No, we, we, we give to the...
It looks like he's coming in?
No, it's a donation to them, it's not...
Is that one...
Yeah, yeah, it's a donation in the amount of ten thousand to the Starr County. So, it's to them. Okay, I have a motion and second. Discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are installation of streetlights.
Yes, Your Honor, on these ones, there's a security purpose, and it's only one, we're going to place three, no, embed a six on one, on each one. Thirteen, fourteen is one, fifteen is one, and sixteen is one.
Okay.
So, motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve. Asked corrected. Discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item seventeen is to accept the lease payment in the amount of a thousand dollars from Ecosight. Moved and second. Discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item eighteen is to accept refund in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents from Verizon to Commissioner Presley. Motion and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item nineteen is a action item to approve a resolution, and you all have it in your pocket, authorizing publication of the county's notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation in the amount not to exceed half a million dollars as authorized under state law for purpose of paying contractual obligation of the county to be incurred. And this is on the...
On the purchase of the Medina.
The Medina property.
What are you going to be, to issue certificates of obligation?
Yeah, it, it has to go under...
No, it's a loan, that's a certificate of obligation. Take it, Your Honor.
Well, it, it is a loan, and certificates of obligation is how we're going to pay it back, but that will be coming out of budget precinct...
Oh, I know.
Huh? No, in general...
Your Honor, but this will apply to any of us. Later on, we want to ask for a loan or something. No, it's only for him?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. We're, we're, yeah, we're not tying in any...
No, so it's only his, for the Medina.
Did I get a motion?
Yes. Sign and I second.
Okay. Moved and second, discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I, I have the actual legal documents for that, for that resolution, and they require your signature to be attested by the county clerk.
Okay.
And the principal, your signature.
Sure.
And I'll be on the bottom counsel.
Okay. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty is to amend this year's calendar. Let me tell you what it is. This, this year's calendar, and you have in your packet, for Christmas, we had twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which is Monday and Tuesday, or no, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, Monday and Tuesday. However, you know, when we started this, we said it was, we were going to follow the state calendar. The state gives twenty-four, twenty-fifth, the day before and the day after Christmas. So, you know, I left out the twenty-sixth. I'm asking to include it. That would be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
On the twenty-eighth.
For this year, this year. Yeah, if, if it's okay.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I'm sure the, our employees will be very thankful to you guys. Then, item twenty-one is to approve the nineteen calendar.
I move to accept any calendar. Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Have you noticed on the nineteenth calendar, I left out election date because that's usually just amendments that are passed by the legislature? If there are some passed or important ones, we might have to come back and reconsider that, yeah.
Your Honor, on, on the very bottom, New Year's Eve, December the thirty-first, Tuesday, I thought it would be...
See, well, that would be in the twenty.
The following year.
The following year. What was that?
I'm waiting.
Okay, item...
Twenty-two to twenty-seven budget amendment.
Are those in order, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Budget amendments.
The budget amendments have all been renewed and all in order, Your Honor.
Do you accept amendments twenty-two to twenty-seven?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. On the order of salaries, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-nine was just information. Item thirty, I'll entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Canales and myself to negotiate with attorneys to represent us on claim LE two zero one eight five three seven zero dash one.
Yes, Your Honor. Okay. I second, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Moved and second, all in fair, please, aye. Motion carries.